Please stand. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Leary.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Here.
That's nine present.
Counsel Leary.
Just like to have a moment of silence and darkened chambers for a lifelong Will Elliotian, Teresa Rivera Canales, an individual who lived in Pawtucketville. She's the grandmother of Robert Gignac and Alyssa Gignac. She was a, as Bobby would say to me, this is an individual who was, you know, took him into the family as one of their own. And it's a great loss for Alyssa and for her parents. So I'd like to have a moment of silence and darkened chambers for her and God rest her soul.
Thank you. Counsel Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and darkened chambers for Marguerite Lang Tang Folly, who passed away a couple of weeks ago suddenly. She's a loving wife, mother, grandmother, sister, and aunt. She was married to Michael Folly for 39 years. She was born in Lowell, educated here in the city, and she actually was a schoolteacher for many years. She was a reading teacher as well as a second-grade teacher over at the Riley School. She survived by four children, three daughters, Kristen Farley, Lisa Shepherd, and Mary Folly, and a son, Michael Farley, Jr. Her father-in-law, for those of us who've been around a long time, is the former mayor, Leo Farley. And she will be missed very much. And I have to tell you also that she was a devout Catholic, a portion of the Immaculate Conception Church, and she instilled her religion in her family deeply. She will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and darkened chambers for Michael J. Bardo, who was a father, a son, brother, friend, and was also engaged to be married. He died at the age of 41 on August 8, 2017, after a five-year battle with cancer. Michael was born August 1, 1976, in Lowell, Mass., and was the son of Stephen and Carleen Bardo. He attended St. Louis Elementary School and continued education at the Greater Lowell Vocational High School, graduating in 1994, specializing in electrical work. Mike worked for 25 years alongside his cousin at Bond Electric as a licensed electrician. He enjoyed spending time with his family, camping. He enjoyed the simple life. Above all else, he cherished the quality time he spent with his fiance, son, brothers, sisters, parents, and friends. Michael spent his youth at the Lowell Ballparks, playing baseball, basketball, soccer. He left a lasting memory for all those who got to witness him play. He had so much fighting ability packed in such a small frame, along with the strength of his family, his determination carried on until his final day. Mikey is survived by his parents, son, Michael Edward Bardo, his fiance, Alicia Pear, sisters and their spouses, Carrie and Kevin Boucher, and Christine and Dawn Durst, brother and spouse, Stephen Jr. and Alyssa Bardo, nephews Jacob, Matthew, Joshua, and Brewer, nieces Lily, Abigail, and Oakley, and also Mike's special friend Keith DeRocco, along with many aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends. Also, the Bardo family, I'd like to present a special and sincere thanks to all the doctors, nurses, and social workers at Tufts Medical, Lowell General Cancer Center, and the Merrimack Valley Hospice. Usually when people use the word "strong" or "strength," they think of, you know, how much weight you could lift, how fast you could run, or how high you can jump. But the strength within the Bardo family over the past half-decade lies with a son and a brother who fought a very long, difficult battle with cancer with multiple surgeries and treatments. All the while, another brother battled cancer twice, and a mother who also dealt with her cancer diagnosis. The Bardo family are not only friends of mine, but others on this council here and many in the city of Lowell. And you will not find a person who knows the Bardos that will not see how strong, courageous, and supportive they are to each other. Rest in peace, Mikey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
I'm sorry.
Just one more, I'm sorry. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Anne Marie Francisco Colby. She was the beloved wife of Douglas Colby, who they would have celebrated their 32nd wedding anniversary this August 23rd. Anne Marie was a teacher in Lowell Public Schools for her entire life. During her career, she taught at the Laurel Lee Elementary School, the Elliott School, the Maury School, and the Bailey School. She leaves behind three sons. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke.
One moment to Mr. Mayor. Isabella Rocha. She was a 16-year-old Lowell student who died at the jet ski crash on the Merrimack River last Sunday, August 13th. Thank you.
Excellent, City Clerk. We have the minutes of the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee of August 8 and the City Council Meeting of August 8 for acceptance. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes, place them on file by Counsel Leary, seconded by Counsel Leahy? Discussion. All in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. We have a speaker that's not on the agenda. It's Tom Fitzmaurice, who is the Executive Director of the Merrimack Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau. Would like to address the council for a few minutes. If there's no objection, we'll suspend the rules by general consent, hearing no objection. Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. I would like to introduce myself to some of you, reintroduce myself to others. Entering my fourth month as the Executive Director of the GMV CBB, I would like to, first off, thank the city and the members of the council for continued support of travel and tourism here in the city and look forward to continuing to promote the city. I work with many events, keeping them here and doing my best to make sure we continue to attract high-impact, high-economic-impact events that bring new visitors to the region, new tax revenues. In addition, we will be attending a couple of different trade shows this year. We'll be targeting meeting planners, faith-based meeting planners, sports event planners, American Buses Association, working with the Lowell National Park, as well as IPW, which is an international marketing trade show for travel and tourism for international group operators. We also do facilitation with Director of Sales at hotels and venues, as well as, I'm putting in a plan for downtown GMV CBB members to come together, mainly restaurants, down towards the Merrimack, Middle, and Market Street, to get all the decision-makers of the Songas, LMA, the arts and culture community together. So I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed, introduce myself, and reintroduce myself to others, as well as pass along a note, and I can forward this information to all members after this. The Courtyard Lowell has just completed a million-dollar renovation. They are having a grand reopening in September 28 from 4:00 to 7:00, and they want me to extend the opportunity to the council and Mr. Manager and Ms. Mayor, so I can continue to bring that information as the date approaches. So, once again, I wanted to thank you for your support, and I look forward to working on behalf of all of you and the residents, and look forward to chatting soon.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Belanger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Tom for coming in. I had a chance to meet Tom pretty close up during the Lowell Folk Festival and that festivities, and I think he's got the absolute intestinal fortitude, the intelligence, the determination, and the drive to help make the city of Lowell a destination here. We had a great conversation, and I think he is fully capable of the position. And remember that this is Festival City, USA, so we obviously want to ramp up special events here in the city. I've been a big proponent of that throughout the years, and I think he's going to work out just great in the position, and I thank him for coming in. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the audit business. We have a communication regarding the fiscal year 2017 budget report, year-to-date. Do we have a motion to accept the communication and place it on file? By Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Discussion, Counsel Elliott.
I know that there's a communication forthcoming in the informational section, but I think not only this report, but also the memorandum, if you will, highlights the fact that we are continuing to maintain strong fiscal stability in the city, excuse me, at the same time providing level or more services to the people of the city. And I'll be calling Finance Subcommittee to talk about other things, and if there's no objection, I think it's important to at least note that the city has a strong fiscal position, and, you know, with capital reserves and our capital plan. So, I also had a question on this year-to-date report, Mr. Mayor. As I went through the report, and I went through the various departments, certainly the Fire Department, again, should be commended. They turned back in lots of money. They were still, they came in under budget for overtime, another positive attribute, their buyback holiday, still a strong sign of good fiscal management in the Fire Department. But what concerned me was the schools that, all of the schools, and some line items in the school department, and in particular ones stood out significantly, and that was a negative balance of $661,000 in health insurance premiums. And my question to you, and I know this is directed more at the school department, but how can that number be so large? How can we not anticipate that large of a number? Because it's health insurance premiums, so you have employees or anticipated hires. Is there some explanation to that? I mean, I know they ended in, you know, the end of the year with a, you know, a small positive balance, but that's my first question. And secondly, how are individual line items by school and by administration, and there were hundreds of them, quite frankly, how are they allowed to deficit spend? Because many of them are in the negative, and I understand some are in the positive in the balance output, who loads their budget, and is there not a better way to approach this? Perhaps to prevent maybe the deficit that they just had to, you know, go through last night?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess to address one of the questions, first off, is as far as the budget goes, the budget is set through the school finance office. They work with the school committee, and they'll provide the line items to be entered into our operating system for the budget.
So, once the council approves the budget, they load by line item what they think or what the projected budget should be?
Correct. They'll provide the specific account and specific budget figure as approved through the school committee.
I would say in each school and all those line items, at least half are negative, have negative balances, and that, you know, that doesn't make sense to me from an accounting perspective, and I think that's something that, whether we invite them to a city council finance subcommittee meeting and ask questions as to why that happens, I think that's, you know, something important that we need to look at.
Yeah, just to further that point, is they are still working to basically get approval for essentially transferring the budget within their school department line items to clean that up. It's a work in progress from the school side still at this point. The big picture is they had been allocated, as of FY '17, about $158 million. That's the appropriation from the city council, and that's responsibility on my end is to ensure that they stay within that appropriation, and they did buy about $79,000 for fiscal '17.
Okay, so you're the big picture that makes sure that they stay within their budget, but when you see, well, when I see, and my colleagues, that there are significant deficit spending on some of these issues, that should raise a red flag, and I mean, I'll continue to look at some of these, but $700,000, you know, at the high school in negative spending in particular items. So, you know, if there's no objection, I'd like to forward this report, Mr. Mayor, to the Finance Subcommittee, and set up a meeting and invite the school department in to have a discussion on this, on this and some other issues.
We have a motion by Counsel Elliott to forward the auditor's report to the Finance Committee, seconded by Counsel Leahy. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Any further discussion? Counsel Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with some of the comments by my colleague Counsel Elliott, and if you look at the budget in total, having about a $2 million surplus at the end of the year, again, we did a very good job in managing the income and obviously the expenses. I had a question having to do with principal on maturing debt. If you look at, I believe it's on page 34, it looks like we left about $477,000 unspent. We spent on interest about a little over $3.3 million, and on debt principal reduction of $6.4 million, but we left $477,000 unexpended. Again, just thinking about my own household, if I had money to put down a principal payment, I would do it. So, I mean, I guess my question is, why didn't we buy down more debt? If I could, through you.
Mr. Baldwin.
To respond to your question, Counselor, some of this has to do with some refunding opportunities that we've taken advantage of throughout the year that have restructured our interest payments and left a significant amount available in excess of what we appropriated, or what the council has appropriated, rather. In some instances, we've utilized a large portion of the available balance due to the refunding in order to bring down the snow-and-ice deficit earlier in the year. However, this will allow us, when the auditor closes the books, to submit the report to the Department of Revenue, to have hopefully some free cash available, at which time, once certified by the Department of Revenue, we could look towards appropriating that to a debt service stabilization fund and do exactly what you're saying, to pay down additionally some outstanding debt to get ahead of some debt service payments.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll, Chairman, we have a motion. We've set the communication, place it on file. No further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under Communications from the City Manager, we have Items A through J this evening. Item A is street paving plan. Is there any discussion regarding the street paving plan? Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Last night at the Centerville Neighborhood Meeting, they were asking about Humphrey Street, and it is on the list, and I did tell them that the whole street was going to be paved. Am I correct, right this time? They thought that we were just going to patch where we dig, and I said, no, my understanding is we're doing the whole street.
Yes, sir, Counselor. So what's going on with Humphrey Street right now is there's a waterline project. They're putting in a brand-new waterline all along the street. What we're going to do, and that street was in horrible condition before, so the gas line's new, the water line's new, and then when everybody's done, we're going to come through and we're going to repave, reconstruct the whole street.
Okay. I just want to make sure I could go back to next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to comment. I see one of the line items here is the Lawrence and Church Street improvements, and, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, I just want to echo what, how good that Lawrence Street looks now, the end of Church Street with those improved payments and the striping, and all the way up Lawrence Street with new sidewalks on both sides. You know, that's an area that really needed some attention, and there's really a very, very noticeable difference going up that street now. I'm very proud to go up there, and I think those neighbors deserved it, and we took care of some illegal parking that was taking place, and that was really congesting that street. So, I just wanted to comment, Mr. Manager, how good that street looks. And it goes to show you the cost, almost $2.5 million. It goes to show you what we're up against with the cost of infrastructure improvements in this day and age, that we are doing the best we can. We will get there, street by street. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on Item A? If not, we'll move on to Item B, which is the Translation Bureau for City Hall. Any discussion? Not, we'll move on to Item C, the feasibility of hiring a consultant to maintain the city school HAV system in Boilis. Counsel Leary.
Just want to follow up. First, thank you for the report. I think, obviously, what we've talked about, I guess numerous times, and we've talked online as well as offline, is regarding getting a maintenance department or a maintenance plan so we can prevent what you're actually going outside the DPW to achieve. So I think what we need to do, and while we have to do this because this needs to be done, what we need to do, though, is really look forward to the future and making sure that we can eliminate this from happening so quickly. I mean, ultimately, you're going to have to make repairs, and you're going to have to make changes and update equipment. What we need to do is make sure we have the staffing and the resources to really increase the longevity of our equipment. That'll save a significant sum of money. And I think if we're looking at some of the motions we had before regarding a maintenance department, you know, combining some of the staff and aligning the resources with the right management, we'll be able to achieve that. Now, if there's a better idea out there, then let's explore it. I think what we need to do, and this is not a reflection on this administration, this is something that, as long as I've been either as a school committee member or even a citizen, these are issues that we've dealt with forever. Sometimes they're a little bit better than others. I think a lot of folks say we need to spend more money in these areas. That's probably very true, but before we go through that expense, let's make sure we're aligned appropriately so we can be the most effective. Again, I do appreciate this, but I think what we need to do is really get on that maintenance department review or changes, and aligning our management with our staff, and then we can go out and take a look at spending the appropriate amount of money to make sure we're maintaining these, which in the long run will save us significant dollars going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, as, we've had a number of motions relative to repairs, combining the departments overseeing consultants. So what we've done is we've engaged the services of the Collins Center at UMass Boston, and they have done a study like this in the past on another municipality, is what they do is they look at the operations of the maintenance for both the schools and the city. And then will make recommendations to us how we can be a more efficient operation. We'll look at combining the two departments. We'll look at setting up management and type of things that we need to do. But I think we need to do a complete review of our maintenance, and the Collins Center is well-positioned to do something, looking at it from the outside.
No, I think that's an excellent idea. I mean, I brought it in before, we're talking about the town, city of Lexington that did that themselves, but I think having that review, once we have it, aligning ourselves appropriately, whatever that alignment or changes should be, and then I think ultimately we've got to agree, we're going to have to spend a little upfront money to save a lot of money going forward in the future. But, good, I'm glad to hear that. I guess what timeframe do we expect to get some sort of preliminary review or a complete
We've just began discussions with the Collins Center in determining a scope of work for the contract, so we anticipate at some point in this fiscal year, hopefully by, you know, the turn of the calendar year, we'll have at least a draft form to be finalized and brought forth to the council with some recommendations from the Collins.
Good, and I'll just end, like, we could look at that in the next budget terms, in terms of if we could be that, that's actually quick in making that type of changes, but thank you, I think that's an appropriate move.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Leahy.
So when you talk about this, this next step will be to see what a maintenance plan will be for all the schools and city buildings too, but mostly just to maintain the schools and cleanings and maintenance work throughout the year.
Absolutely, and whether we should combine the two departments and set up an administrative process, you know, an administration over the two, whether that makes more sense. So it'll be a...
So this initial contract is just for the six schools that need Boilis?
Yes, right. These are the ones that need the work right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the Board of Parks fees. Any discussion regarding the Board of Parks fees? Counsel Rourke.
I think it's to me, through to the manager. Mr. Manager, just a big thank you for doing this. You know, any fees that would have been incurred, obviously, would have been passed on to kids and chances that I would have been able to afford to play multiple sports. So, again, I know this was all you and your team and Christian Bellgard, so a very big thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
We need a motion. The city council has to approve these fees, so if we could get a motion to...
Motion approved. Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion to approve, and, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Manager, I want to thank you, Mr. Bellgard, and the Board of Parks for collectively working on this, because this was very important. I recall when Counsel Rourke made the motion, that we received a number of emails from single moms and low-income families saying, if, you know, if my child, if I have to pay for my child these fees, he or she will not be playing you sports. It was that simple. And there was a number of them. So this goes a long way, Mr. Manager. I'm happy to see that we achieved this. There's always a way. So this is great stuff. I appreciate Counsel Rourke making the motion, and we're going to have, as a result, there'll be a lot of our youth that are on the field playing sports rather than on the streets, getting in a mischief, and that's always a plus. So thank you to everybody involved. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Counsel Belanger to approve the fees, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Discussion. Roll call on the motion.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Leary.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Nine years.
Just don't further discussion on that item. We'll move on to Item E, which is the Clean River Project. Any discussion regarding the Clean River Project? Counsel Elliott.
I just think this is a good motion, Mr. Mayor, and they do great work, and the approach recommended by the Law Department, not to enter into an agreement, but to expend funds, particularly in our area, is a good approach, and, you know, all of us individually can support them else, you know, ourselves, but they do good work to clean the river and using grant money to clean up the section within our purview makes sense.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has any other community pitched in to give anything for the cleanup? Because it says that it's Merrimack Valley...
I think when we had a discussion with them, they've had discussions with everybody in Massachusetts along the river, which is many communities, all the way down to Amesbury. I don't know for sure which ones have actually contributed, but I think they were asking for the same amount for each community, regardless of the size and regardless of how much frontage, river frontage they had.
So the city sought a grant of $15,000. How did that work?
Mr. Manager.
No, what happened was, this was good timing, because the wastewater department needed to do some testing of the water in the Merrimack River, and they were very impressed with Rocky and his ability. So they used money from the Water, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, $5,000, to hire them to do the water testing. The other 10 is we've taken from our budget, correct? And we're going to, we're going to make sure, though, if you look at the agreement, they're going to buy boones that are still going to remain the property of the city, and also the other $5,000 for cleanup has to be done in the river within the boundaries of Lowell. So we are making sure that they're cleaning the Lowell part of the river.
Yeah, they do a tremendous job. Rocky does tremendous, so...
And Mark Young was very, he was very excited to employ them because he has great confidence in their abilities.
Yeah, me too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to Item F, which is the Needle Pickup Program. Any discussion regarding the Needle Pickup Program? Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I'm loving the progress we're making here, because we all know the opioid issue is not getting any better, and not only in Lowell, but throughout, we find there are syringes being found on public beaches and in ballparks, and Lowell is not unique. And we need more or less a, almost like a round-the-clock cleanup crew, if you will, that I believe that we should remain that position to be in-house. I mean, we're paying a lot of money to outsource it. I think it's actually, if I may be so bold, Mr. Manager, I think it's less expensive to the city to train and outfit some of our workers and pay overtime, and I think we're still getting a deal there in that sense. So if we, anytime we can not outsource and...
All right, so the 1922 building, that seems like a pretty good price. They're gonna strip it all and be...
Yes, Council, a complete renovated roof along with the underlayment. The parapet will be completely repaired. And we're shooting for late fall this year to accomplish this. So it's very aggressive, but we know it's an important piece to get in place.
Thank you.
Counsel Leary, then Counsel Blenner.
Just quickly, to follow up on the elevator thing, I think ultimately, we should be having those certificates updated after they do them. That's not, we have to, if we have to, whatever department is actually inspecting them, we should be reaching out to them and verifying that it's done. I mean, if you're looking at it, it's a little bit disconcerting that you're sitting there in an elevator and it says last year. You can't be picking it up and calling City Hall going, "Hey, is the elevator safe?" It should be there, right in front of you. So if anything we could do to just take the paper and put it into the actual elevator, that would be the appropriate thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Blenner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Counsel Malonazo. This is a rather extensive list of repairs. I am very impressed how far we have come with all these repairs. And what's bears mentioning here is that most of these repairs have been done in-house, saving the city a bundle of money. And here we go again, by keeping city workers busy and it saved the taxpayers a lot of money. Of course, the roof will have to be outsourced. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, what's the roof gonna cost again for the 1922 building?
We estimate $1.2 million.
Okay, that's new underlayment, that's new everything, okay, all right. Yeah, that's a large building, that seems to be in the ballpark what that building that size should be, so that's good news. But I share the same concerns as Counsel Leahy there. I mean, I guess from an educational standpoint, that's classrooms, understandably, that comes first, but that fieldhouse is, you know, we get the calls and the emails and the texts about rained-out indoor track meets, keep in mind, indoor. And it's very troublesome. So please, Mr. Manager, let's do the very best we can there. But into the report, what raised an eyebrow, Mr. Manager, is a paragraph where DPW has identified a critical need as it relates to an HVAC position that was called a monitor that responded to alarm and trouble calls of the HVA systems throughout the schools. And unfortunately, it finishes, "That has been removed from the school budget." What is the story there? I mean...
Through you, to the mayor, to the council. Mr. Carroll was the monitor in the school this time last year. I didn't know him personally, but I knew of him. And when the people who worked with him in my office found out he was leaving, they were surprised and concerned. Quite frankly, the monitoring system, my understanding, was the first line of defense. He would be the first one to know, he'd be the first one to react. And because that position, that particular person, again, my understanding was, he had institutional knowledge. So not only could he respond to, you know, get the word out, but in some cases, actually troubleshoot and fix it. So it was, we think it was a, you know, it was not a City Hall decision. And quite frankly, at the end of the day...
And we're talking in extreme weather conditions where it could be middle of January, very cold, where it'd be preventing pipes being bursted, and you're telling me there's nobody there, Commissioner?
Well, I think what the school department did is they assigned the duties to others. So I think there is a system in place presently.
Okay, I hope so, because this is what I've noticed here from my notes. This seems to be a concerning trend here. When the school committee had a budget hearing held in May, they also eliminated two plumbing positions and three school resource offices. It seems to me that, you know, the strategy there is to eliminate noneducational positions as a way to make ends meet and put it on the city's side. So, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, this is a number of positions now. I mean, we, this council have made a number of motions regarding school maintenance, and we have been very poor at it for the last, I don't know how many years, okay? And these, this is, this is two steps back, in my opinion. We need to get better, not eliminate positions. So what have we absorbed and what are we doing? That position that Commissioner Belgaud mentioned, who is, I wanna know, who's doing this now? This is a very crucial monitoring position that, as Commissioner stated, is the first line of defense in the event of an extreme cold. If a boiler goes down, someone's there to keep that machine in check, hopefully get it up and running or get assistance to it to prevent further damage. And by eliminating plumbers, and this is troubling. So what have we absorbed and replaced? I wanna know what's going on here.
Mr. Manager.
Well, as far as the monitor, we'll find out what monitoring system, as Mr. Belgaud said, I'm sure there's a monitoring system in, but we'll, we'll report back to you exactly what the monitoring system was. Yes, and they, there were two DPW, there was a plumber and, there was actually two plumbers that they budgeted for in their, in the school department budget, but they informed us that they weren't gonna budget it for this fiscal year, so we picked it up ourselves. So those positions are still there. They also informed us, did you say the school resource office?
Three school resource offices, yes.
But we still have those, we picked them up in our budget.
We picked them up, yeah, okay.
So those positions are still active and they're still working as far as the, so they're still, the plumbers and the school resource offices are still there. I will find out about the monitoring system and what they do.
Okay, yeah, please do. And Commissioner Belgaud, please, this is no fault of yours, thank you for the update. It's just troubling to me to see that we're scaling back on maintenance when it needs to get much, much better. So I look forward to future reports on this. And so you're telling me, Mr. Manager, the, so the two plumbing positions and the three school resource offices, the city has picked up the cost and they are still, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? Counsel Rourke, then Counsel Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the manager, Mr. Manager, has the section outside the newer building, the contaminated soil, has that been taken care of?
I just signed the contract yesterday, and it will be removed prior to the start of school.
So that will be taken care of for today, right? Thank you.
Counsel Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page six of this report, it, and it's, I might say, thank you for this very much detailed report. It says, "Room 612, wall surface mount burnt, melted, and is still live." But it says it's completed, so it isn't live anymore. Am I to assume that? Okay. When you go down further, it says, "The rigid conduit exterior to elevator pedestrian walkway broken open, exposing wires inside and likely pinching the wires, electrocution hazard." It should be fixed before school starts, so it's still a hazard. I hope nobody's in that building. Now it's saying, on the next page, page seven, "Chapter 18, exterior wall is pulling away from building," and is clearly noted in room 629. The exterior wall is pulling away from the building? I don't, I don't know. I hope that that can be, or is that, has that been straightened out?
Says it's been completed.
That's kind of frightening. I hope it stays put where it has been fixed, but all the, there's quite a large number of very frightening things that have happened to that, to the school. It's, you know, rather frightening when you go through this, but...
And that's why we prioritize the life safety issues to be first addressed, and so they have been doing those, and will continue. We meet monthly, I believe it is, to go over these with the school department.
And if, if those elevators were inspected in the school, could we get all, get a copy of the inspection and have it say that it's been all right? Because it seems like, according to this report, it hasn't been inspected. I'm taking the Commissioner's word that it has, but I'd like to see the proof. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, any further, Counsel Leahy?
Thank you, just one other follow-up. So now that we've done all these repairs, what's the plan of action with the school department to make sure, I mean, some of these things are just, it's, it's just that someone needs to report it to somebody. If, if a door falls off a panel, who's responsible to report that to our electric, our city electrician?
Again, to the manager, so we have that school-due vehicle in place, which is a reporting system, which allows someone from the school's side to put it in a pipeline, it comes over to our side. If it's electrical, it goes to electrical, if it's land and buildings, masonry, plumbing, whatever it may be, will be addressed that way. And then the system also allows the checks and balances, you'll actually see the report completed or partially completed, and then it'll be sent back to the school department, vice versa. So, and this program has been in place before I got disposition, but I must tell you that it's a very effective program. I believe that over, just since I've been here, we've had 2,072 school-due requests, some of them in electrical, most of them in the public works, land and buildings, out of which about 1,400 have been completed. Now, that does not include what you're looking at as far as what we're doing for summer, because the manager wanted to separate out when the motions were being put in place to kind of show that we were gonna attack the best we could, the problems in the schools. What the school-due vehicle does not show you is police, fire, the city buildings that are out there. We don't track city buildings. This is solely school department work that have been completed since July 1st of 16.
All right, so let me just say this, just so we're clear. So if, if, if one of us is visiting the school, is a parent or, or city administrator, we walk by and we see, we see something, a hole in the wall, we can go to, and I'm just gonna name, so we can go to the head of the school or the operations manager and say, "Is that hole reported by whoever?" Right? I'm assuming now that by the end of the week, every week, if somebody sees a hole in the wall, that hole is gonna be reported, right? I mean, you can't fix it if you don't know it's there. And if the custodian doesn't report it, then the head of operations doesn't know it's there, and so forth. So I would hope that the school department and Lowell High have a better system in place so that things can get, you know, expedited. It's just frustrating that, you know, if you don't know it's there, you can't fix it.
That's true.
Someone will tell you it's been there for four months.
And if you've seen a hole walking through the hallways, call my office.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll...
But I mean, they need some accountability on their own end. We can't monitor every school.
No, that's true. We can't fix it, we don't know. And sometimes it's a little embarrassing, because there has been even motions that came up that were so, you know, it really, you're right, it's reported.
I mean, we got a lot of work done, and I just hope that there's a better system. I know what you just said, but it still takes, you know, people to report these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on, Counsel Blenner, I would just wanna point out that the responsibility for the maintenance of the schools belongs with the city, not with the school department. And I think everybody on this council and everybody on the school committee is aware that there's a long list of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. And I think there is also a joint subcommittee made up of three members of the city council and three members of the school committee that are looking at addressing how to better attack that list so that things do get done, but also looking at the whole maintenance of effort schedule to make sure that, that that is accurate. And, and things like a hole in the wall never end up getting addressed because there's always higher priorities. And that, a hole in the wall would have such a low priority, and the list is so long that the hole in the wall could be there for a long, long time, whether it's reported or not. Counsel Leary?
No, and just to build off of that, too, I think that's why what we need to do is meet, we're supposed to be meeting monthly, I know it's the summertime, but meeting monthly and going over the list. So if you see a hole in the wall and there's other issues, at least we can acknowledge what those issues are, we're cognizant of what that is. Here's why we didn't get to the replace window. And then we can make some adjustments. And I think the bottom line is, and I go back to what I've said earlier, and I'm a broken record, but it's imperative that we do this. We need to look at, like the system you're beginning to, that process of aligning ourselves to be more effective. Then we're gonna revolve, resolve ourselves, and we're gonna have to spend a little bit more money on the right types of human capital or human resources for folks to fix different things. You know, if we line it up right now, we probably, like you said, the DPW's thinly, all of our departments are bare bones. You can't expect people to go out there and make these repairs in a timely fashion. One of the ways, though, before we spend more money, is make sure the management and the alignment makes sense. And that's why I think we have to look at the maintenance department. But we also need to look at this monthly to say, basically, here's all the issues that didn't get addressed this month. Why is that? Is it because we don't have enough human capital? Is it because we're not managing it effectively? What's the, what's the issue? Is it because we haven't allotted enough financial resource to that? That's the issue we gotta address on a monthly basis. And I think, and we said monthly, because ultimately, this stuff gets way out of hand. Now, I don't wanna go to a meeting, just to go to a meeting and look at three holes in the wall weren't fixed, but at the end of the day, we need to take this as a top priority, that we're not gonna take, we need to do deep disruption of the behavior. We need to eliminate it. And we need to acknowledge that there's gonna be some fault on all of us, because it's gonna result in some finances. But it's also, before we get there, it's gonna have to be realigned to what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further, Counsel Samaras?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Belgaud, thank you for the report, because in former headmaster, I mean, we faced those problems a long time ago, and this is a lot of work that's been done, that I wouldn't often see that happen. But you basically alluded to, we have to be concerned about our school buildings, but the police station and fire station, do we have any type of report from those two buildings as to their needs?
I'm not sure if it's as comprehensive as the one that you're looking at, but I know we do track, what we do over there, but we track it separately.
What I'm saying, Mr. Manager, is there a possibility that we look at, I mean, our school buildings, police and fire, those buildings, of course, and City Hall, and try to look at what does have to be done? And I, I think it's wise for us to get a complete list of all the buildings so we can look at this logically, because sometimes what, what happens is, "Why didn't you do this, Mr. Manager?" Or, "Mr. Superintendent, why hasn't, hasn't this been repaired?" When in fact, we've probably cut the budget ourselves, you know, I mean, there's been a budget shortfall, we haven't made, you know, given the monies to do this. So I think it's important that we have a sort of a complete picture of what the needs are. And then I think we have to go beyond this and look as a city, okay, what type of money should we set aside for maintenance? We talk about it a lot, but we really don't have a, we'll say, maintenance program that everybody can say, "This works. This is the process, and this is what will happen." Because of the lack of funds. And quite often, I mean, Mr. Belgaud, in his other position, quite often, we'd ask you, and Mr. Belgaud, you'd come in, "I borrowed or took or did whatever magic you had to to make something happen." But I mean, we just can't rely on that every day. I think we have to stand up and say, "You know what, Mr. Belgaud? What do you need to do your job?" And we have to, we have to make it available. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Malonazo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of good information has been shared this evening. My question, I have a simple question. For instance, like, why haven't we mowed the lawns at most of our schools this summer when we could've or should've or even had summer help to help us do that? But the bigger question I have is whether or not we have a preventive maintenance plan in place, and whether or not we have given Commissioner Belgaud the tools that he needs, be it just a tablet to be out in the field, take a picture of a problem, generate a work order right from the tablet, have it be an emergency work order or a routine work order or requested work order, something that we can make sure that, again, this is, I'm talking about citywide now, school department-wide, that we don't have a backlog of all of the work orders that Commissioner Belgaud talked about. And do we have the ability, or does the DPW have the ability to go out and hire workers from the union halls, pay prevailing wage, as long as we don't lay anybody off from the union? I mean, if we're down people, be it workman's comp, be it vacation, be it whatever, do we have the ability through the contract to actually go out and hire mechanics or carpenters or plumbers in order to make sure that this work is getting done? Because, again, when you drive around our schools, with all due respect, they, they don't show well at all, and it's really unfortunate. Again, this is just one person's opinion, but it's, it's really unfortunate. And to think that if they're not being cared for on the outside, what's going on on the inside? Well, if you look at this report, we know what's going on in one of our school buildings, and it's been being corrected. But we all get reports about other things, as I'm sure that, as former school committee people, Leary and Leahy know, they get calls all the time from people that are in the schools and wanna know why something hasn't been fixed. So I think we have to make sure that Commissioner Belgaud has the necessary tools that he can do work in the field so that we're not, you mentioned that the school work order system does work well. I just wanna make sure that it's, that it's portable as well. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
No, that's an excellent point. I think we're more reactive than we are preventive, but that's what's gonna be one of the tasks of the Collins Center study, is to come up with a preventive maintenance plan that we can implement to avoid those. But the mowing of the school lawns, those are the custodians of the school's responsibility, correct?
Yes, sir. They're responsible for all the green space around the schools, including the landscaping.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to recycling and city parks update. Thank you, Mr. Belgaud.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the recycling and city parks update, Counsel Rourke?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Manager. To the manager, just a good, good plan, Mr. Manager. The only question is just the timing of it. It says over the next few months. You know, most of these parks here are basically baseball, then obviously Edwards with the soccer. So let's go into next spring and next summer as well?
Yes, Counsel, what we, what we looked at, we looked at the motion, and we thought the best way to deliver services in a timely manner would be to roll this out with the folks in the, in the different parks areas that have concession stands. Most of my baseball, we do have football, we do have soccer, we do have basketball. And the best time to do that would be in January. Concessions in the city of Lowell have one-year permitting abilities, so they have to go in front of the border parks, I believe it's every January. So our goal would be in January to be at the table with all of them all at the same time and roll out this program. I think it's a good place to start. I think it's a good place.
It's a great, it's a great idea. You know, I think it, Counsel Elliott had said before, over at Edwards, they had, you know, makeshift recycle cage or whatnot, so I think if, and, you know, I mean, people have said, you know, in coaching baseball, they, they actually come up to me and said, "Why are we throwing plastic bottles in the garbage cans?" Right? So, no, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think they'll see we get a lot out of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to the year-end financial review. Any discussion regarding the year-end financial review? Counsel Elliott?
Just briefly, because I touched on it earlier, but I, I did just wanna highlight, now that I have the graph in front of me, the strong, the strength in our revenue numbers, particularly with new growth, which is, we estimated it, we, we used conservative numbers as we all, you know, as, which is, I think, is a prudent move, but, I mean, new growth from 2.1 million, just certified by the Department of Revenue to 3.1 million, that's, that's a sign of, you know, new construction permits, additions, things of that nature. That's revenue that we didn't count on, but it shows good economic growth in the city as well. So between that and licenses and permits, along with motor vehicle excise tax, meals tax, there's, those, those are all good signs, in my opinion, and according to the memo as well, that, that there's, the economy's moving well, and the city, the downtown and businesses are, are doing well. So it's, it's good news. It relieves the burden, or the burden to homeowners and business, you know, taxpayers as well. So I, I think it's, I think it's good news and worthy of mention. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counsel Samaras?
Thank you. And I wanna thank the manager and Colonel Baldwin for this report. It's a great report, because it does show the success of, you know, our ability to collect the money, the funds. Mr. Manager, could you or Mr. Baldwin basically give a highlight of what this report says? I mean, our constituents are watching this, and we say it's a good report, but I'd like to have Mr. Baldwin, if possible, talk about the strengths of what's happening here, and are there any weaknesses that you see at this point that we should be dealing with?
Thank you, Counselor. To respond to your question, some of the strengths that we have seen in fiscal '17 in revenue collections were, overall, that the revenues exceeded expenditures, so that's a positive in the money that's coming in, but also in the administration's efforts to, you know, scale back on expenses so we're not spending 100% of the budget, so as to try to create a little bit of free cash in the next year as it's certified by DOR. Some of the strong aspects of the revenues, as Counsel Elliott pointed out, were the new growth, tax collections were strong, which were a highlight of the Law Department and the Treasury's efforts to collect prior year's taxes through tax lien auctions, et cetera. Other notable areas were in meals tax and also the, the new growth. But meals tax is a highlight of Lowell's ability to market itself as a destination city. Areas where I would recommend, you know, needed improvement would be in the sort of subsections of the license and fees categories. However, this council has taken action in addressing that by revising the fee schedule to bring some of those fees in line with the service cost of providing those services. That happened in the middle of fiscal '17, so we'll see the full recognition of that revenue and hopefully an increase in fiscal '18. But overall, I would say that, you know, fiscal '17 was a good year financially, and it, it highlights the administration and the council's efforts to provide all the services that are necessary in a city the size of Lowell with a tax levy that's comparable to the socioeconomic makeup of the city.
Another question, well, actually, when you talk about the tax levy, so, but based on that, I mean, you're saying we're doing an awful lot for a city that, I mean, whose tax rate is reasonable at this particular point in comparison to the surrounding communities? Would you say that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I would say that the, the number of services that are provided, you know, trash, parks, public works, et cetera, considering the tax revenue that the city comes in, brings in, I should say, to put that in perspective, only 36% of the total revenue in the city comes from the tax levy. So it's, it's quite a notable achievement to be able to provide those services based on that amount of revenue from the tax levy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Counsel Leahy?
I just wanted to add one thing. I, I mean, mostly, the report's a good report and everything, but when you do look at the tax revenue details, you know, just a couple of minor things that do stick out, especially the in lieu of tax payments, I mean, that's a low number, we gotta work to get that up, definitely. You know, I mean, you know, we just, we're constantly just working, I mean, we don't wanna put all the burden on the commercial, we don't wanna put all the burden on the residential, but anything, we did adjust our fees and, and things like that this year. So that's, should help going into the next fiscal budget, right? We should see a difference with that. But that in lieu of tax payments, that really stands out like a sore thumb, so we just need to continue working with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Counsel Malonazo?
Just one quick question. It is a very good, detailed report. When we talk about the year-end revenues for fiscal year 2017, we talk about the revenues collections as of '81. Does that mean we have any fiscal year July 1st through July 31st numbers in that, or is it just, again, fiscal year '17, but it is as of August 1st? I just didn't know if we were counting anything that may have come in for fiscal year, probably not, but fiscal year '18 from July to July 31st? Because it says as of '81.
That, that's just to reflect any accounting adjustments that happen after June 30th to the date noted on the report. However, all revenue would be received by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Leary?
Just to go back to the payment in lieu of taxes, I know we had a few, we had one motion specifically to our largest nonprofit. Any word from, like, Circle Health? Is it something you're sitting down to, to work out a compromise or a deal?
Yes, I met with them, and we agreed to beat further relative to the issue. So, yes, I'm working on that right now.
All right. Any estimated timeframes when that'll be, come to resolution?
I believe I'll be beating with him before the end of August again, so I should have something to report in early September.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Winnie, for the discussion on this item. If not, I skipped over item I, which is parking fee and rate proposal, and we have a speaker for that one? Mr. Clerk?
Gloria Lee. Hello, everyone. I have a really good piece of news for everybody that I stumbled across a couple, two weeks ago. I've been trying to share it with everybody I can before... I've been trying to share it with everybody I can before September the 1st. I live in downtown Lowell, and I've been here for 18 years, and I park in one of the garages. We have six garages. Well, I was looking back at my original brochure that was given to me when I moved here 18 years ago, and it said, when you are 62 and older, you get a reduced rate to park your car every month. And I thought, great, is that still true? So I called the parking director, and they said, yes, it's only 26 if you're 62 or older. So I thought, this is absolutely wonderful piece of news. Everybody in downtown Lowell who parks their car in a garage, which you have to do because you can't park it on the street. So instead of paying $48, I get to pay 26 starting September 1st. So I'm trying to tell every person that I can possibly reach that in one week, you can pay $26 instead of 48. I think this is a big deal to a lot of people. I don't know how many people this affects. So I, I was very glad to find out. All I had to do was go to the garage and tell them. Then I started to think, why didn't anyone ever tell me? Why isn't it posted on the wall? And I asked the question and was told, everybody knows. So I have written letters to all of you. I've written letters to the head of the parking garage. I've called the senior center, the adult Lowell senior center. The woman there said, I've been in charge for 30 years, no one's ever told me this. I have found three people out of dozens and dozens of people who know that they only have to pay $26, not 48. So for, I never thought I would stand up in front of everybody and say how old I am, but guess what? I'm a senior citizen, and I've been paying too much money every single month for four and a half years, and no one volunteered this information. So I started to think about it, and I thought, all it would require is a simple sign on the wall, and everybody would know. So I requested this in writing to all of you. I sent you letters. I delivered letters over here last Monday, and I delivered another one yesterday. I talked to the UMass Lowell radio station. I gave them a little interview because it's now my mission to let everybody know, you can save that money every single month, and you have one week to find out about this. So I'm trying to share this with everybody that I can, and that's my point. This is a simple, simple request, is tell the seniors they only owe $26. So that's that. And I actually have a second part of this because I've been thinking about it for two weeks, and because I've tried so hard to find people who know this, and I'm telling you, no one knows this. No one. A handful of people. So I'd really be interested to know how many people fall into this category and how many people are actually paying $26 a month. And I think it's probably not very many people. So that's my, the first part of, of my little endeavor here. And then the second part was, the city has made a mistake, so maybe they need to refund all that extra money that I overpaid for four and a half years. So I made this request, and so far, I haven't gotten very far. So I'm waiting for a response, and I have copies of my letters here if you need them, but I think all of you have them. So that's my simple, part one, let's tell everybody. Part two, do we owe refunds to all of these people who have been paying too much money because the city charged them too much and failed to tell them? Once a month, when I write a check, someone should have said to me, oh, are you 62 or older? And then if you do, the correct amount is $26. That's, that's really simple, simple, simple. And I think this is wonderful news, and I want everybody to find out about it as soon as possible in one week. Okay? Thank you very much. I really, I think that if you think about this, you're going to understand, it's a really positive, great piece of news to a lot of people, and they would really appreciate your action on this. Just put up a sign in the six garages, a tiny sign. I can do it on my computer in five minutes. That's, that's, that's my request, okay? Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair would entertain a motion to refer this matter to the Finance Committee for reporting recommendation, particularly regarding the proposal itself, but also item two of the speakers' two requests. So can we have a motion of that effect?
So move.
By Counsel, Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Leary. And also regarding the first item, Mr. Manager is, and the notification at the different parking garages, or the notices, or signs, is that something that we can address in a more immediate way without waiting for the subcommittee?
Yes, my understanding is that, it says what the daily rates are, and then it says for other rates, check with the parking department, but we're going to update the signs so that we address issues like this.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Mercy?
What is this woman referring to, September 1st, and we only have a week? Are we saying that after September 1st, this isn't going to apply to people over 62 or whatever?
Good evening. No, I, I think Ms. Lee was referring to that the next billing cycle occurs on September 1st, so she was attempting to make this information available so that, you know, those individuals could take advantage of it prior to the next billing cycle.
Okay, I see. But after, in the next billing cycle, they'll still be eligible to that discount, won't they?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this is something I didn't even know, because I don't have access to the parking garages. Had I known that, I would have been right behind you saying the same thing. So I want to publicly thank you because I didn't know it was a secret. I did not know it myself. So, I mean, we don't read the fine print, so when you don't, you kind of not know that?
Sure. Well, like Ms. Lee had mentioned, she became aware of this discount through information that was provided to her by the parking department when she had originally enrolled. We have a pamphlet available at each garage that lists the terms and conditions, the market rate, and all discount brackets. So, you know, Ms. Lee actually became aware of this discount through material that was distributed by the City of Lowell Parking Department, which is still available today.
I wish she had got it four years ago, maybe.
Well, yeah, I think, I think, you know, Ms. Lee received it when she originally enrolled. I mean, it's our role at the garages to, thank you, yeah.
That's the new one.
Well, yeah, this is, so we have this form. We also have a supplemental material that, that lists the rate information as well. But, yeah, no, we will definitely take her suggestions under consideration. I think we can have those signs installed within the week.
Very good. Thank you to the woman who alerted everybody of that. Great job.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. When this goes to the Finance Committee, some of the charts, not numbered, but one chart, it says proposed, proposed Lowell garage rates, and then it has proposed discounts on the right side. It says Lowell High School students, 73% off, and the proposal would be 50% off. But can we just, when we have the finance meeting, can we just have more clear charts so we know, so we don't have to start bouncing around doing the math in our head? And the other thing, I should know this, and when we do residential stickers, do, does someone pay for their residential sticker now?
No.
They don't? Okay. All right. So that's something, but the proposal is to charge $10?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we, so we'll discuss this at the meeting. I mean, I just think that you shouldn't have to pay for a proposal. That's the one thing I just didn't like in that, but we'll discuss it at the finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? Hearing on the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the communications from the manager and place them on file. We motion that effect by Counsel Milonozzo, seconded by Counsel Mercy. A discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so, so voted. Next is a communication from the city manager requesting honest day travel for two employees. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Leary. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Counsel Rourke. Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milonozzo?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Next is a vote authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement at 16 Franklin Street. There's no objection, we waive the full first reading and go to the second reading. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a temporary license agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Greater Lowell Incorporated with the principal office at 124 Main Street in Westford, Massachusetts for use of city property to which 16 Franklin Street for the purpose of construction of a park on the property for a period of one year. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Discussion on the, we have a registered speaker on this, I guess.
Brenda Gould.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brenda Gould. I'm the executive director for Habitat. I think I know most of you, and I'm thrilled to be in front of you talking about just a little bit different subject. Won't take much of your time. You know that Habitat built homes. We've been extremely successful in Lowell. Thank you to all of you who've made that.
Can you use the microphone? Could you go to the microphone?
Make the project possible. We've built in Centerville recently. We have a project going on in Belvedere, but our most thrilling project is in the acre, where we've already built eight homes on Rock and Willie Street, two more to come. Through the hard work of the people at the DPD and working with Tom at the DPW, we have also worked with residents in the acre, with the CBA, with the Action Neighborhood Group, with the YWCA, with residents there, to try to design a vision. We asked the residents what they wanted to do, and then we worked with the DPD to try to make that happen. This here in front of you is a vision. It's not a final, because we are working with the DPW to make sure that this park is easy to maintain. We've raised $60,000, and we hope that we'll be able to do this through you granting an agreement. It, it's easy maintenance, it involves community gardens, it involves a place where people to sit, no matter of their age. It has some turf, artificial turf with swings and some bounce beams, and then an area for play, which we've also cleared with the, some of the police to make sure that the trees don't hide criminals, and we're working with some local merchants on lighting. So I'm hoping that this property, I think, was originally considered green space. I would have liked to build a house as well and put the park somewhere else, but we couldn't make that happen, so working with the DPD, they put this proposal to you, and I hope you will consider it. We want to be a great community member. That doesn't mean just building homes. It means making places for, safe places for people to go and to gather. So I don't know if there's any questions, but again, a vision. If you grant this agreement, then we'll go forward with what we need to do to make sure that the park can accommodate what the residents want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Counsel Mercy?
Does the border park any, have any input into this at all? Not that I, it's an agreement, but...
Oh, they don't have any input, but with, Mr. Belga has been intimately involved in reviewing the plans and everything and has approved it.
Okay.
It's a good plan, it's a good partnership, it's good for everybody.
Oh, I'm sure it is, yeah.
They have the money to, to support it, so it's sound. Right now, this parcel is a city-owned piece of property. It's really not a park, has not been deemed devoted as such. So when this park is completed, this will probably be our 93rd park in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not roll call.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milonozzo?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Next is an order for a 60-day trial. If there's no objection, we waive the first reading and go to the second reading pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning section 266-6 thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Do we have a motion to approve by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Counsel Leary? Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milonozzo?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just, one thing on that last piece through you to the manager. When we change those soft signs, is can we put the road sign there just to make people aware that there are traffic alterations at that intersection for, with the start of school? We should have that ready for the start of school, maybe for about a week or so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Next is a, an order of taking a parcel B, B-3 at St. Anne's Church. If there's no objection, we waive the full first reading and go to the second reading to take by eminent domain certain parcels of land in the City of Lowell for municipal purposes in furtherance of the Lowell Canal Bridge Tiger Project. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Leary. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milonozzo?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Next, under the ordinances from the city manager, is an ordinance to accept an amendment of the Code of Ordinances regarding boating and watercraft. If proper motion would be to refer this to a public hearing for September 12, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion of that effect by Counsel Rourke?
Yes, if I could.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second on the motion, I'd like to...
Second on the motion by Counsel Elliot, Counsel Rourke.
Mr. Mayor, we have three motions, also on the agenda concerning in orders. Do you want to take them all now?
Sure, we can do that.
11-5, 11-6, and 11-10.
Okay, so 11-5 is by Counsel Milonozzo, requesting the city manager work with proper authorities to enforce the waterway regulations on the Meramec River. The next motion is also by Counsel Milonozzo, requesting the city manager work with the Law Department and the state delegation to draft legislation to require watercraft to be insured with some form of compulsory insurance similar to automobiles. And the third motion is by Counsel Rourke and Counsel Mercy, requesting the city manager work with the state delegation to develop safety measures for the area along the Meramec River that allows for water activities. So if there's no objection, we'll combine those three motions with the, with the ordinance which is being sent to public hearing. Counsel Rourke, did you want to speak?
I think we have a public speaker.
I'm sorry?
Do we have a public speaker on this, on one of these?
Paul Belay.
Paul Belay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the city council. I want to thank Counselora Mercy and Counsel Rourke for bringing this motion forward. First of all, my condolences to the families of the two folks that died this last month in the boating accidents up here in the Meramec River. As you know, I work, I've been working on the river for over 22 years now, and, and I've fished this part of the Meramec since I was a kid. It's a great resource that we have in our backyard. The fishing is the best in the region right up here, catching walleye, northern pike, small lodge mouth bass. I mean, the fishing is unbelievable. But in my opinion, we have some issues. We have some enforcement issues regarding personal watercraft on the river. It's a public safety issue. In my spare time, when I'm not down in the southern part of the Meramec, I like to go out with my buddies, do a little freshwater fishing. We'll launch our boats in the boat ramp, and these watercraft are flying by us close to shore. out with my buddies, do a little freshwater fishing. We'll launch our boats in the boat ramp, and these watercraft are flying by us, close to shore. You're trying to launch your boat, your boat's floating off your trailer, you're sideways, you're getting knocked over by the waves. You're out fishing. Boat goes by, you're rocking and all this stuff. I handed out some, some safety rules here from Mass Environmental, okay? I mean, the stuff, some of this stuff is a no-brainer, all right? I'll just go real, real quickly. As far as personal watercraft, wear approved life vest, okay? Attach a safety lalit, lalit to your wrist. That's a, that's an attachment that goes from your throttle to your wrist, so if you fall off, the craft shuts off. Staring your personal watercraft requires thrust. That's another thing about these machines, they're very, very powerful. The only way you can stare them is if you give them throttle. That's how you can maneuver quickly. I mean, I don't know if how many people have been on these jet skis, but they're a lot of fun. I mean, it's not my cup of tea, because there's no rod holders on them, but, I mean, they're a lot of fun. Always operate a slow no-wake speed within 150 feet of the following. Swimmers, watercraft, craft afloat, shoreline, boat launches, which is what I just spoke about. Shoreline, we can talk about the beach. Moorings, and never operate at all within 150 feet of the baiting beach. We just talked about that. And no person shall operate a jet ski except in a safe and prudent way so long as not to endanger life, limb, or property in the following examples. Operating in less than 16 years old, which I believe in the state of Massachusetts you have to have a boating course, all right? So I don't know how they're registering their boats if they don't have the boating course, but that's something we can talk about later on during that subcommittee. Operating during the nighttime. Operating on waters under 75 acres. Well, we have a problem with that on the Meramec River, because I don't think we're 75 acres wide. There were some pretty narrow spots along the Meramec. Operating under the influence of alcohol, that's a no-brainer. Operating at high speeds in a congested area. In inland waterways, the excessive speed is 45 miles an hour. So that's all, you got to stay under 45 miles an hour. Those machines move pretty good. Operating while towing a skier or any person in any manner. So you're not supposed to tow anybody on those machines. I don't know what the enforcement is, because I'm not here on the weekends all that much. I know that after that young lady was killed a couple of weeks back, my buddy Bobby Gagnon, who you all know, saw the wardens up here and they were giving folks citations for negligent operation and speeding and unregistered watercraft, so. I don't, we used to have boats in the Meramec. Lowell, Chemsford, I don't know if we still do or not. Like I said, I'm not up here all the time on the weekends. I don't know what we have for enforcement. So I'm looking forward to going to this subcommittee to check out this ordinance. And one other thing, Mr. Manager, if I may, is, what's the word? Oh, buoys! Navigational aids. We have no navigational aids. If you can go to the delegation and see if we can talk about this. I was down on Newburyport Saturday, and I pulled over the Newburyport Harbor Master, Ray Pike. And I said, "Ray," I says, "who's in charge of the buoys here on this lower part of the Meramec?" He said, "Because this is a titled river." Titled river, which means that at my dock at high tide, there's nine feet, and at low tide, I'm down to two feet. Because it is a titled river, the coast guard is in charge of navigational aids and maintaining them. I said, "Well, what about in Lowell?" He said, "Well, you're in inland waterway, so that is controlled by the state." I don't know how many propellers, lower end units, pontoons that are lost on this stretch of the Meramec, because it's very difficult to navigate. There's a channel, but not everybody knows how to navigate it. There's only 10 miles of river between us and the New Hampshire border. So if there's any way the state could look at maybe mocking the channel, that is also a public safety issue. Just my brother, a year ago, hit a, hit a rock, shat his pontoon, half the boat was sinking. There's no, there's no towboat US or any of that on the, on the Meramec, and it took a long time for him to get off the water. So I think a navigational aids from here to the New Hampshire border would be a great, a great thing to help folks enjoy this stretch of river, because it is a jewel. It really is. So anyway, that's it, and thank you very much for your time. And thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, taking all these things into account with the proposal before us tonight, Mr. Man, I'm, Mr. Manager, you know, if you want to implement some of the things that we have in the motions here, maybe for the, for the public hearing, and then we can go from there. But, thank you.
Council Millinazzo and Council Mercier.
Again, I thank Paul Belay for being here tonight. I think he treated me as a potted plant, but other than that, I respect the fact that he does know an awful lot about this. It's not going to a public, it's not going to a subcommittee, as I understand it, it's just going to a public hearing. But I would request the administration to contact the Lowell Boating Club to make sure that they're aware of, of what's going on as well. And again, my two motions, again, came forward as a result of the tragedy on the river. Want to make sure that the people that need to be regulating the waterways are regulating the waterways, and whether or not, from the standpoint of the insurance, you need to have compulsory insurance for automobiles. We should look into having compulsory insurance for these types of water vehicles as well. So that's the, those are the motions, and again, I appreciate the input we'll get back from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made this motion because one death is too much for the water safety that is not being enforced. Now, we have before us this evening an ordinance and an amendment to the ordinance, and that's good, because what it's saying is, and it's very, very important, that there's no jet skis or certain type of watercrafts from the Rock Bridge all the way down to the Patekett Falls. That's a good area of space, because you have the Bellegod Boat House where families come and their children swim, and there's a, we have UMass Lowell, and they do their sailing, and we have kayaking and things like that, where you don't need these vehicles just whizzing back and forth, in and out like this. And it is a lot of fun. I've been, I jet skied just last week in the Lake Winnipesaukee, so it is a lot of fun. And as a young girl, I did grow up on the river, and I do agree with Paul Belay, there was buoys all along that show you where the rocks were. I don't see that anymore. I don't know what happened to it. There's no marked safety with those buoys that say, "Don't go here," or "Keep your motorboat this way or that way." It's just like a free-for-all. There's no safety zone, like we have, you know, lines on the highways. We don't have any maneuverability where you could be safe on the water. Having said that, I'm concerned about, so we, so we're, to assume that the ski, jet skis can go on the other side of the Rock Bridge. Even so, tragedy could happen on the other side. There's a no-wake zone, so there's, that's fine in this area here. What I'm concerned about is, we can make all the ordinances and changes and amendments and safety on paper, but if we don't have someone on the waterway enforcing and keeping people to do what they're supposed to be doing, all of this is for nothing. I'm very concerned about the safety. We have a beautiful jewel, as, as everybody knows, along the Patekett Boulevard where people go. They have picnics, they go swimming, they go kayaking, and then we have people that, after a few beers, they're all over the place, creating havoc. And this is what's been happening. No supervision, no safety features along that area. So this is a good start, and I probably shouldn't comment on talking about a decision before a public hearing or whatever we're going to be doing with this, but it's very important that we have structure, which I think this ordinance is going to do. But the fact is, we need other things happening there, too. And we had the Southeast Asian Water Festival, the 21st year for that, along the Meramec River there was a good event. The Harbor Master did issue an order that said no other aircraft, boat, watercrafts within that area. That was precise. That was a good warning to keep them off, to keep the, the people that were boating safer there. That was fine. But, and I, and I wanted to say that District Attorney Marion Ryan was there. She knew about the tragedies that had happened. She knew that we were going to be discussing it. She offered her help to the city in any way possible, if she could convene a meeting, if she could bring people together, if she could help. And I, I wanted to deliver that request, that offer to you, Mr. Manager. Also, we do have a person, and I remember as a young child seeing a Harbor Master come to the boat and say, "Does everybody have enough for, as many people are in the boat? Do you have life jackets?" And, and so many things that they, there was a checklist of what you had to have on the boat. I don't know that there's this Harbor Master going there, so this is what I want to know through this motion. What is the function of the Harbor Master? What is his or her hours of operation? What is the timeframe that this person is supposed to be there? So I want to know, is this person ever there on the weekend? What is the duties? What are they around? Do they ever come to the city? So be, as important as this is to make amendments, it's just as important to have enforcement and people that are on the waterway to, you know, tragedy could happen at any time, so I don't want this to happen again. It's like out of control over there. It's a free-for-all, and it's very sad. And I, I think it's a timely motion that everybody get on board with, and these are the things I want to know. So if we could just move on with that one, thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliott.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the motion. The River Walk, it is, it's a wonderful resource, a, a place for cultural and recreational opportunities for the city. It's been, it's used by thousands, hundreds of thousands of people. This past weekend, there were close to 30,000 people coming into the city for the Southeast Asian Water Festival. However, it's also been a tragic summer with two fatalities, and I think this ordinance is imperative that we adopt it and we do it in a timely manner. Now, just that waterway between Rin Beach and the swimmers that go to the beach, the hundreds of, it's the only public beach that we have in the, in city boundary. And there's recreational boating at the boathouse, and we do have other boats that do go into that area, the Lowell Motor Boat Club. I believe they're, they've, you've spoken to them, Mr. Manager, and, you know, they support this ban, because I firmly believe that there needs to be a ban. I understand and, and, and agree with the enforcement aspect of it, but let's face it, we can't be putting a police officer and a boat. First, we don't have a boat, and we don't have the staff to put on the river 24/7. One of those accidents was at 10:30 at night. So I think to, to protect the public, this measure is, is a measure of public protection for the swimmers, for the boaters, and, and to allow those individuals to know that they are protected. There, there are reckless drivers on these jet skis, and if they want to go somewhere else, I'm sure this is not the only waterway that, that has a ban on water, on, on jet skis, however, considering one fatality is enough, never mind two. We have got to, as a city, as a city, take this measure and do something about it, and the way to protect the public, in my opinion, is to ban jet skis in that particular area. So I look forward to the discussion in two weeks. I know this goes to, to a public hearing, but I, I think the administration has taken the, the correct approach to amend the zoning ordinance, to protect the public, and the way to do that is by, by adopting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council, Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my, my colleagues for being proactive and coming in with motions, and I want to thank the Speaker, Paul Belay, who, who, in my opinion, is a subject matter expert in this. He charters fishing boats for a living. This man knows boating safety, and he called last week, were very, very concerned about the conditions up there. It is complete lawlessness what is going on, as Counselor Elliott alluded to. There is nobody up there monitoring safety, and this is what happened. Unfortunately, we have a 16-year-old teenager who died in a tragic accident, and it's unfortunate that we have to address it at this point, when it probably should have been done some time ago. But it, it is, there's all sorts of flaws going on up there, that there, there isn't no, no wake zones, there's no markers for rocks. I mean, it's, it's August, the wa, the river levels are low. It is the recipe for disaster, and sure enough, the worst happened, unfortunately. So, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager now. Mr. Manager, I'm going back a number of years now, but the Lowell Police did have Harbor Masters at some point. I boated that river in my time. Chemsford had them, Lowell had them. Do you know approximately when that was dissolved? Are we still doing anything proactively?
Well, we, we actually do have a Harbor Master.
We still do, okay.
Yeah, we have one designated, but we don't own a boat. What we do sometimes is we, Chemsford has a boat, and we will use their boat and staff it with a Lowell Police Officer. But I'm going to get the complete description of what our Harbor Master does. The real issue is the environmental police, is that they're really in charge of patrolling that area. But I talked to this, I talked to Senator Dunnehu and the state delegation, and we're going to be meeting with the Colonel of the Environmental Police to talk about enforcement in the area. So the good thing about this is the motions and the ordinance has sparked a great interest in it, and we'll be able to have these discussions before the public hearing. Also, District Attorney Ryan has already reached out to Superintendent Taylor.
Yes.
To sit down with Chief Spinney of the Chemsford Police and the, the Tinsborough Police to see if we can do some proactive enforcement. If this ban goes into effect, we still have to deal with the other side of the Rock Bridge. So it has spurred a lot of discussion, and hopefully I'll have a lot to report by the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good news to hear, but it's, see, in my opinion, there's two options here. Either needs to be policed on nights, on weekends especially, or we need to stop it altogether, because this, this cannot happen again. So this is, again, I appreciate my colleagues coming in with this motion, but something needs to give here, and I look forward to the public hearing and the input from the public, but to me, it's either policing or we eliminate it. There's two options, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Mercier, then Council Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this part of it. According to the ordinance that has been amended, there's nothing about a time constraint, timeframe. For example, I know from experience that jet skis don't have lights on it, and yet this last tragedy happened at 10:30 at night. How do you get on the river, and you're driving this erratically, and you kill someone, and you have no lights, and it's 10:30? I think maybe this ordinance should say, "All jet skis are, you know, not the boats that don't, they do have lights, but all jet skis and the watercrafts that do not have lights have to be off before sunset," or something like that. That should be in this amendment to the, with the time.
Thank you. Council Leahy.
I just wanted to add, add that I have been on the river a few times, and they're, they do have the boat there from Chemsford, the, I don't know if it's the Environmental Police or it's both Lowell and Chemsford, but they do go up there. They're just outnumbered. So this is good timing for the, well, the ordinance will be good to discuss. I've talked with Captain Taylor, Superintendent Taylor, and, and a few others, and so they've just got to get together with the other towns, Tinsborough, Chemsford, and everything, and just get to, get a handle on this. But next two weeks, we're going to discuss the ordinance, so just wanted to thank you for that. But I did want to mention that they are out there, so every weekend.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Rourke.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Manager, is, is the Rock Boat Ramp, is that the only access point for the city to get into the water, the river?
No, there's, my understanding is there's a boat ramp, I think it's called the Rock Boat Ramp, up by the water plant, so.
Is that the only one? That they can get into the water?
Although, I guess they go through the Lowell Motor Boat Club.
But there's one in Chemsford as well.
So is that, so is that, I know the gate is, is up at off-season, but is that shut and open every day? Every single, you know, so if, it's as to Counselor Elliott's idea of closing it at night, does that, do we close that at six, seven o'clock?
I don't know. I'll find out about that and let you know.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I, I would point out that I think the two largest users of the river are the Lowell Motor Boat Club and the University of Lowell, and so anything that we do should be done with, with their input, I think. But I do think that Council Mercier makes a great point when she points out that that accident occurred late at night, and that there was no lighting around there. I, I don't know how you enforce that, but that's going to be the challenge, I think, that we'll have before us. I think, I received a communication, I'm not sure if every member of the city council received a communication, from a member of the Lowell Boy, the Lowell Motor Boat Club, who had some suggestions.
So, tonight, we're just voting to send this to public hearing for September 12th. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under resolutions, we have the renewable resolution.
No, you need the pub crawl. Second ordinance was a pub crawl.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, we have the pub crawl ordinance. So, we have to accept the amendment to the Code of Ordinance for Pub Crawls. If there's no objection, we'll waive the full first reading, go to the second reading, and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances in the City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 222, Article 2, by adding a new section, 222-18, entitled Pub Crawls. The motion would be to refer it to public hearing for September 12th at 7:00 p.m. by Counsel Milonazzo, second by Counsel Samaras. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under resolutions, we have a resolution, the renewable resolution, which is to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use, included but not limited to municipal solar projects, energy efficiency upgrades, community choice aggregation, municipal fleet replacement, installing public electric vehicle charging stations, promoting and participating in community solar projects, and prioritizing public transportation. Do we have a motion approved by Counsel Samaras, second by Counsel Milonazzo? Discussion. We have a registered speaker.
Jay Mason. Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Council. I'm Jay Mason, 77 Tyler Park. I've already spoken in support of this motion. I'm the Chair of the Lowell Sustainability Council, so I just wanted to make sure I was here in support if there were any questions, and I also wanted to reiterate what you just said, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the concrete steps. This program will allow us to focus on municipal solar, energy efficiency upgrades, community choice aggregation, the municipal fleet replacement work, the charging stations, community solar, and prioritizing public transportation, which I think are all really very specific and measurable kinds of things that we can engage in and work together to approach this goal. I did have a concern about reporting back, and I discussed those concerns with the city solicitor, and I'm quite comfortable now, after talking with Counselor Samaras and Counselor Leary, that we can do report backs, and we will handle that as a matter of course, as it might normally be done through the council. So, I'm personally very much in support, and I feel very thankful to the council for having the foresight to move forward with this, and I'm here if there are any questions for the Sustainability Council. Jonathan Grossman.
All right, that's it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Roll call.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Blanger.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot. Counsel, Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Leary.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Next, under subcommittee reports, we have ad hoc charter review, voting, voting district representation, subcommittee of August 22, 2017. Counsel Leary.
Okay, thank you. We met earlier this evening about 5:30. In attendance were the entire subcommittee, Counselor Leahy and Counselor Samaras and myself. In addition, Counselor Milonazzo, Counselor Rita Mercier are also in attendance. The topic really originated from Counsel Elliot's motion that didn't get seconded regarding going to district councils. Subsequently, obviously, we had the aforementioned lawsuit that is pending before the city. The subcommittee is not addressing that particular lawsuit, and we made that point clear in the subcommittee meeting. That's a different issue unto itself, although it does go down a parallel path, perhaps. We did address and speak about potentially, well, we spoke about the motion between Counsel Samaras, Elliot, and myself regarding taking a look at the feasibility and making potential changes to our Plan E form of government. So, the premise of the subcommittee, the initial meeting, was to get kind of, get a historical analysis from the city solicitor of what we've done in the past and what some potential remedies could be if we decide to review making any changes to our Plan E form of government. So, I'll break that up, and basically, what the solicitor was discussing, ultimately, there's three specific methods that change a Plan E form of government. The obvious one, which most folks are knowledgeable, at least briefly knowledgeable, is the charter commission. We discussed that at length, and what the city solicitor articulated ultimately is that, that is not really the more common way that most cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are actually reviewing their Plan E form of government, although it was something that was done in the past historically. It's rarely done at this point in time because of several reasons. One, it's relatively cumbersome. It takes a significant amount of time, anywhere between 18 to 24 months or sometimes longer, and often, you come up with no change at all after the commission does their review. It is, however, considered to be one of the more thorough ways of reviewing your local form of government, in terms of it does go through the analysis of what your current government is meticulously and ultimately making those recommendations. The second part is our special acts, which this council, the previous councils have done already in the past, in terms of, for example, the voting, 17-year-old voting rule. The council did vote on that and made a request of a home rule petition to the state legislature, which at this point, they have not foreseen to make an approval of. It's been rejected at this point, but special acts follow that similar course. The third is a ballot initiative, and what we were explained by the city solicitor ultimately is that our ballot, our charter, Plan E form of government, does not have a binding resolution component to our charter, our Plan E form of government. Ultimately, any type of referendum would be non-binding. So, we had a good discussion regarding the potential remedies and paths that we could take or may not take. In addition, we had the, we had the election office presented and put on a presentation regarding what other similar towns have done throughout the state in recent, in recent years. We spoke at length about Worcester, how Worcester's former government is a Plan E form of government similar to ours, and that they had made changes, and ultimately, that they, the public actually elects their ceremonial mayor, who also serves on the school committee, and that's denoted by an individual running as an at-large city council request that they also run as mayor. So, ultimately, the public makes that, really, they pick their mayor, not as opposed, not currently how we do it, as the city council does it. And also, they went to a district form of representation in addition to an at-large representation. We spoke in terms of some cities, like the City of Gloucester has actually switched from Plan E to have a different form of government. So, different communities, given different situations, make different changes based on, really, what the public entails. You have other cities such as Newton, where Newton has approximately 25 city representatives, city councilors, which is, you know, all of us would get elected if it was here in Lowell at this point in time, if we had the Newton's former government. And you had other forms of government, like the City of Westfield, where they have 13 city councilors, six ward, seven at-large. So, it runs the gamut. Some have more district than at-large, a couple of them have more at-large than district. There's only two cities, I believe, three cities in the state of Massachusetts that still hold the at-large form of government, and that's Haverell, Cambridge, and Lowell. Cambridge and Lowell do have city managers' Plan E form of governments. There's different, that Cambridge has with proportional voting for their city at-large than we do, you know, the winner, the best, the highest vote getter becomes into, gets to be a city councillor. Ultimately, we discussed some of the previous history, what we've done recently. We've asked the city solicitor to go back and get additional information regarding whether a charter commission's elected or it's appointed, kind of really going through those state laws in terms of what's needed. We did have some feedback from the city councilors in terms of what their thoughts were initially. What we seem to agree, and it's really the full council to make decisions or not make decisions on, what we seem to, like, the common goal of the subcommittee would be to have an additional meeting for more of a forum for public input and for additional questions that we've asked to be, to be addressed. We did have a small sampling of the community addressing the city council regarding what their thoughts were. I won't get into that tonight, because we plan on having a bigger forum in the next few weeks regarding what direction we should begin to take and what format we should begin to take before we make any formal recommendations to the city council as a whole. One of the comments did, though, is, and it's an obvious comment regarding getting the information out to everybody, and really, making sure we had interpreters, other folks that could reach folks so they could be part of the process in addressing the council in terms of what do we want to see in our form of government. The other issue that we talked about in the beginning of the subcommittee was, there is a pending lawsuit. We did not address that at this point in time, and some of the council needs to address in executive session, which I'm sure will be done shortly. Many of the councilors spoke, really, had difference of opinions on it, but all of them agreed that we need to take a look at, really, take a look at our form of government and see if this is really advantageous for us going forward. Many of the councilors spoke tonight, not every single one spoke, but most of them spoke tonight regarding, we want the public to have a vote in any potential changes that would or would not occur, because it's their form of government. We did have one citizen speak out, saying there was some concern regarding, you know, not a lot of people in the public actually show up to vote, and that's the whole premise of, of that potential suit that's pending. I think at the end of the day, if we decide to make any changes to our government, that that impacts the citizenry, impacts our residents, they need to make a final decision. But again, what we wanted to do is have another meeting, have a, probably not in the city council chambers, probably take it on the road, get more people, more input. Right now, we're in the dead of summer, where people are taking their final vacations and what have you, so we're going to plan that very shortly. We'll have some additional information from the city solicitor in terms of options, what those options could be, and hopefully, at that point, if not at that meeting or shortly thereafter, a third meeting, we'll be able to make some recommendations for the full council to make some decisions, so they have a comfort level going forward. It was a good meeting, it was our initial take at it, so we do expect at least one more meeting mandatory, that's what we actually promised. Whether or not there's need of more remains to be seen. So, we took a vote as a report of progress and hope to schedule right after the Labor Day holiday. Thank you. I think that is a motion as a report of progress.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have a motion to accept the report as a report of progress, second by Counsel Mercier. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under petitions, we have one property claim. Chair would entertain a motion referred to the Law Department for report and recommendation. Counsel Samaras, second by Counsel Rourke. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under miscellaneous, we have a request for the installation of a church parking sign at 524 Chemsford Street. The motion would be to refer to the traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Milonazzo. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under city council motions. The first motion is by Counsel Leahy, requesting the city manager provide a report to the council regarding national grid tree trimming throughout the city. Second by Counsel Leary. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. This comes up occasionally over the years, so if we could just find out, obviously, we've been getting some calls, and everybody thinks that they over-trim, and to an extent, they do. So, if we could just find out what their policy is, just to make sure that they're not over-trimming, and as they say, you know, they're just doing what they want to do and asking for forgiveness later. So, I think they were over in Patacaville this week, so they were really chopping up a lot of trees that the residents weren't happy about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. The next motion is by Counsel Leary and Counsel Leahy, requesting the city manager provide a report with recommendations to resolve the ongoing complaints regarding incidents occurring at the corner of Central and Middle Streets. Motion needs no second. Counsel Leary.
Just quickly, I mean, I've heard complaints for a while from the businesses in the area, and I've even seen things there. We've spoken about it. I've seen the police interact and try to, you know, use a customer-friendly attitude towards it, but to no avail. Recently, we just got another call from a local business that, you know, that just has had enough. We understand the benches are there for folks who want to utilize it, and that's a good thing, and probably should continue, but so we're looking for some type of resolution to what's continuing. Tonight, today, there was, I guess, there was a detail out there with the law enforcement, and there was no issues, because there's a law enforcement professional standing there on a detail for construction. Obviously, we can't have a detail looking at a few benches, that makes absolutely no sense, but we are having, this is the gateway into the downtown. People see it, I've seen it early in the morning when I, you know, getting a cup of coffee. It's not a good thing. You know, you want the folks who are living in that area to utilize that space, but we got to find a way that's going to be appropriate for not only the people that live downtown, but also appropriate for people coming in to spend their money. This is one of the reasons why we're having some challenges, because you're seeing behavior there that's not appropriate, and that needs to, you know, I love the word "deep disruption" of the behavior. We need to have deep disruption of what's going on there, and I just don't know the complete answers to it. That's why I'm looking to see if we can put our heads together and work together to really remedy that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy.
Sure. As we said, there's a lot of complaints. I think today, there was a detail officer over there, either hired by TD Bank or, I think it's Wingate, and it was a quiet afternoon, but it's just been getting to the point where the disruption over there is just out of control. And over the weekend, you know, there's a lot of nice people there, behaving themselves, having a good time using the benches, but during the week and into the night, it spills out from Wingate over the brick wall onto the sidewalk. So, something needs to be done, and if we can meet with Wingate and maybe TD North to see what they recommend, because they can't have their residents on their property but spilling out onto the sidewalks, drinking and smoking and swearing and causing a disruption. People don't want to walk by there, and I know we all know that, so we just need to put our heads together and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is a very good motion, timely indeed. I'm hearing the same complaints about that. Residents live in the high-rise, they come down to sit down and enjoy themselves, they're being pushed aside and subjected to all this, all the rigmarole that's going on there, and it isn't right. I thought we have police walking the beat in the downtown. If we do, they should step it up and continue walking in the area of the downtown. After all, the downtown is a neighborhood. People like to go out. They don't have a park, but they do have the benches along, and they like to come down and sit down and enjoy tranquility or see the sights go by, not be the entertainment of brutality. It isn't right to those people. And at the same time that the police are walking in the downtown area, if they could step over the line and go through Connie Square and go to where the green, the green bamboo is, there's an alleyway over there where people park their cars to go into this particular restaurant, and there's all kind of people that are doing drug transactions. It's not a good environment, and they're urinating by the dumpster, and so many things are happening, and so it seems that the police go around the downtown, but they never cross over after Connie Square and go a little bit to where Middlesex Community College is to the side of the canal there. So, it's, they should be visible in the downtown a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If I could just add in, Mr. Manager, we, you know, we have asked several times over the past few years to have extra details downtown so that incidents like this wouldn't happen and so that people would feel safe. So, certainly, if there are details down there, the police officers that are down there must know that these problems exist and where they are, which to me means they shouldn't exist in the first place, but hopefully, it's something that can be resolved pretty quick.
Excuse me. As well as I can mention, Carowack Park, not a good area either. That's a bad thing to be saying, but I'm telling you the truth, people are complaining about it.
Any further discussion?
Sure, just one other thing, I just want to add, and you make a good point. When I was downtown this weekend also, you know, we have to try to revitalize that bid program that you brought up, because some of that would help with this, you know, with the beautifying the area and maybe helping out with the extra details during the weekend when these things happen, and Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. So, I did want to bring that up, that, you know, we need to look into that again and get that discussion going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. The next motion is by Counsel Leary, requesting the city manager provide an update to the city council regarding the Lloyd Overpass Plan and the timeframe for final public input, second by Counsel Leahy. Counsel Leary.
Just, I think it's a timely thing. A lot of good things are going on in that area, and you could obviously see the courthouse going up with its fourth-floor beginning. You know, I took my son down there this morning on the way to his school camp. Very cool. I think the thing we really got to look at is, like, let's get a timeframe, let's get some more public input, so make some of the concerns that we're hearing regarding, is it going to be better than what we have currently now? And that's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to manage when you're dealing in such a tight area, in such an old area. So, if we could get that updated meeting set up and get that final plan, at least the timeframe where we expect it. We expect a lot of good things. By the way, it's really, the LaPole area is looking really good, too. That's going to be awesome when it's open, that the sidewalks on the South Common, very good, it's already to go, the widening that's going to happen on Thorne Dyke, really just want to make sure we get the public input and make it, you know, what we want it all to be for the entire city. I think it, what we're seeing now is really, it's interesting, it's, it's beginning to become very positive. So if we can get some more public input on it and a timeframe for that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Council Leary, request that city manager provide an update regarding the illegal low-riding cars throughout the city and police challenges regarding enforcement, if applicable. Seconded by Council Leahy, Council Leary.
Just, I won't beat this. I know a lot of folks are talking about, but I'm getting some more calls regarding, if we could just get an update, because it is, I guess the question is how do they even get registered, which is not a, obviously, a city function, but it's something we need to like work, continuously to work on, and anything we could do, you know, to improve that would be a ma, major benefit to our neighborhoods and to this entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion, two motions have already been addressed, so the next motion before us is eleven point seven by Council Milonazo, request that the city managers update the city council and the Lowell High School Building Committee regarding the implications of the letter from the bond counsel to the MSBA dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, when the city administration received the letter. Seconded by Council Samaras, Council Milonazo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all received a copy of the letter that was dated July twenty-fifth from bond counsel to the executive director from the MSBA. So again, I'd like to know the implications of that letter. I guess another question would be, did we know the letter was coming from bond counsel? Who requested it to go to the MSBA? And I, the manager and I did, did chat about when the administration received it, and there was a building committee meeting on August third with a letter, I believe, was not shared with the members of the, of the committee. So again, I just think there was so much in that letter that I'm, I'm looking for the implications as to what it means. It appears that the Lowell School Committee, this one or the next one, will have design, veto, if you will, over what's going to happen with the high school. So again, just looking to get a report from the administration as to what all this means. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Council Mercy, request that the city manager of the property department install a light on pole number twenty on Fletcher Street, the North Common side, or on pole number two thirty-five across the street by residential side at Willie Street. Seconded by Council Roach, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Mr. Manager, that is an area of crossing that street that is very dark. It is on the side of the North Common, and people go there to play handball or whatever, they swim or whatever, and then they play in the park and things, but it is very dark when it gets, there's no light there to cross that very busy street of Fletcher Street. So we could either have it on the North Common side on pole twenty or across the street, there's another pole there, two thirty-five. So I'm not asking for a light on both poles, but whatever they think is the best way to go, so that to have that area illuminated for the people that live in the acre that have to cross the street. And I don't, I don't want them crossing a busy street with the darkened area. That's for, it's a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Council Mercy, request that city manager increase the property tax revenue relief to nonprofit veteran organizations from four hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars. Seconded by Council Elliott, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm proposing through this motion is to implement a statute that was voted on through the legislature but never enacted, and that is to increase the property tax revenue relief for nonprofit veteran organizations from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. The state law says that if someone is either elderly or a veteran and qualifies for relief, they must pay at least ten percent of their real estate tax, and they do, and organizations do, the seniors do. This motion is specifically for nonprofit veterans organizations. This motion will specifically help post six sixty-two VFW on Plain Street. They are in the process of selling their building on Plain Street and building a new building across the parking lot. Whomever buys the old building will be putting that property on the tax roll a hundred percent. When the VFW builds their new building, they will be able to get property tax relief to seven hundred thousand dollars as the statute allows. As city assessor Susan Lemay relayed to me, we talked about this, she told me this is a win-win situation. It's not a burden to the city, but it will help that veterans group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is eleven point eleven by Council Samaras, request that city manager have, have the Lowell Fire Department Chief review preliminary designs of the proposed new high school to ensure that it provides adequate public safety for the occupants of the building.
Thank you.
Seconded by Council Milonazo, Council Samaras.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, at the last meeting we had of the high school subcommittee, not subcommittee, but commission, I believe it was a member of SCANS that stated, and I think she used the term good news, we've kept the five-story building, we lowered the ceiling on the fifth floor of the five-story building to ensure that the building would come a foot and a half under high-rise standards. And what she spoke about was that it would not necessarily, we, the building now would not have to meet the high-rise safety standards regarding fire protection. This is not an area that I want to see money saved, and I, I would like to see our fire chief make sure that all preliminary plans go before him to assure that all safety standards are met. I know in nineteen ninety-seven, I met the same problem when there was a shortfall in money, and the architects were using those type of situations to save money as much as they could, and that's one area that I do not want to see money saved, the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Council Milonazo?
Thank you. Through you to the city manager. Is it also true, Mr. Manager, that the reason it was kept at eighteen inches below the high-rise zone was that if it did get to the high-rise standards, it would require a zoning change? My understanding was, would require a zoning change.
I don't know. I'll look into that and I'll report back to you about, I know it did, it, they did that so that you had to, you didn't have to go into the high-rise.
Not a zoning, zoning amendment, excuse me, zoning amendment, yeah.
Yeah, but I'll find out about the zoning amendment.
Thank you.
If I could, Council Milonazo, I'm not, I think that that area is zoned suburban single-family, which has a height, a maximum height of two and a half stories of thirty-five feet, I think. So it, I would think a zoning change or zoning change would be necessary anyways at some point in time, but it'll be good to get the report from the manager. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Council Belanger, request that city manager update the city council regarding Route Thirty-eight improvements for the widening along Kittredge Park. Seconded by Council Mercy, Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Now, Mr. Manager, we're just looking for an update here through the, a master DOT project. It's going to be some considerable widening, specifically along Kittredge Park, and it's going to extend technically, not the widening aspect, but lights, light upgrades and some sidewalk improvements all the way to Phoenix Avenue and Douglas Road. So if you can, I know it's in the design phase now, if you can, you know, see where we're at with that, I think a lot of improvements will help, you know, stop that bottleneck that we see on Nesma Street near that hospital in particular. So that'll be good news to us all when that takes place and widens that street to help alleviate the traffic flow there. So looking forward to an update there, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. The next motion in the evening is by Council Belanger, request that city manager update the city council regarding the RFP for the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Master Developer and what the city is doing to market that district. Seconded by Council Leahy, Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, you know, as we all are aware of at this time, that we receive, we had a very successful open house at the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, and fortunately, we did not get any bids for a master developer, but I don't feel it's the end of the world by no stretch. So, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager now, Mr. Manager, are we, at this point, I know we needed a master developer to acquire funds for the Signature Bridge, the two and a half million, which is, which is crucial. Now, this point forward, do we, are we required to have a master developer?
Fortunately, Watermark signed on as the beneficiary of that, that grant, and they promised to develop so many jobs within their development, so that allowed us to move forward with the EDA grant, so we didn't need the master developer to do that, but I do think we need a master developer. I mean, we're doing a good job marketing it, but we can always do a better job, and when those other parcels on the other side of canal become available, we really will need a professional to do it. So we continue to, to reach out relative to different developers. I'm scheduling an appointment with one individual that I thought was going to put in, find out why he didn't put in, but no, we do need a master developer, and we'll continue to, to search for a master developer, but we are marketing it on our own right now, I think we're doing pretty good, but we only, we're limited as far as reaching out to some organizations that would be interested, so we'll need a master developer to do that as, as quickly as we can.
Okay, well, that's great news. I think we, I think things are really going great there. As Council Larry too alluded to, we see the steel is up now, and it's, the building is really starting to sort of take shape, but, and we do have a number of interested companies in some of those parcels, Mr. Manager, and, you know, we haven't had good experiences to this point with master developers, in my opinion, to this point. Now, I'm not saying it couldn't be beneficial in the future, but it's done nothing but slow us up, in a sense. They've sort of gone at their speed and at their leisure, and it has not benefited the city. I'm not saying that can't change, but I like what we're doing right now, to be honest. I think we're going great. I think your administration's being proactive in landing companies there, and we have, again, several interested parties, so, so we'll see what happens with them, the ones that are in negotiations, and see the need. So basically, Mr. Man, it doesn't sound like it's required, but it is, you think it's beneficial. Is that what I gather here? Okay.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right, well, that's your recommendation in time, and maybe that's what we'll do, but I'm, I'm very pleased the way things are going at this time, so please keep up the good work with your administration and planning and development. So look forward, and look forward to the motion response. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. That concludes the agenda and leaves us just with announcements. Are there any announcements? Council Mercy?
Surprise, no. I just have two very brief announcements. The Veterans Assisting Veterans and the Battle of the Bands is having an event this Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from eleven AM to six PM at Holy Ghost Park at sixty-five Village Street. It's ten dollars per person, kids under twelve are free. That is on Saturday, so it's a very busy weekend, and then Sunday, there's a family festival at Shed Park, sponsored by the Center for Hope and Healing. It's five dollars for the event, but so much to gain. The Shed Park is at four fifty-three Rogers Street. It, they're turning the Shed Park into an amusement park for the day with water activities, games, live music, food, and raffles, yoga, zumba, sports, and much more. So it's going to be a family festival event there, so two good events, one sponsors the veterans, one sponsors the Center of Hope and Healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Leahy?
Just wanted to add the festival Sunday at the, for the hope, for the, what is it again? Center for Hope and Hea, if you go down there, they have a water tank, you might know somebody in there that you can dunk, so.
Yo, boy.
Well, Bob Gignac, I don't want to give away any names, but Bob Gignac. Thank you.
That should bring everybody down, just. Any, any further announcements? If not, Chair would entertain a motion adjourned by Council Roach, seconded by Council Samaras, all in favor, all opposed, stand adjourned.